Morning, everybody, and howdy. So, me, or January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Reg, me, Commissioners Court, in the county of Texas. We have a court established. Commissioner Carvajal, Commissioner Harper here. Commissioner Wilson is live streaming with us by way of Zoom. See, Commissioner Whitmire. Okay. Also, we have Sheriff Ray, David Ducks with Engineering, Dwayne Goddard, County Attorney Bill Hugger-Muller, our county fire marshal, Matthew Poston, our county attorney, and Kathy McCord, Assistant County Attorney. First Assistant, I might add. All righty. First thing we'll have, Lee, if you'll lead us in our places.
Please face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please face the Texas flag. I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the people, Texas, a state under God, one indivisible.
Father, we thank you for your many blessings in this county and this court today, Lord. We ask that you continue to bless Liberty County's first responders, citizens, and everything, Father, with this COVID disease. We ask that you bless the God given administration for our country, Father, because it will affect us all. Just continue to give this court wisdom in all things, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
We have no notice of proclamation. And we have no incentive. Well, the comment that I know of. All right, so we'll ease off into the consent agenda. Yeah, do you have anything? We have some add-ons, I believe, from Dwayne, if you did.
Yeah, apparently, we sent the list. Apparently, the list didn't get over the warrants payable. I have one of my ladies in my office is fixing to run that over there to y'all. It shouldn't, it's no changes from what was sent out in the packet, but it's got the signature page on it. One thing I'd like to add is a payment to Oscar Cicada for training for a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And like I said, the signature sheet for the warrants payables on its way over there to y'all. Maybe y'all come back and revisit that.
All right.
And Judge, I have an addition for a vacation payoff for Mr. Gene Ray. He was an employee for precinct four, Rainbridge. He terminated in December and should have gotten the six point seven five hours of accrual for his December vacation, but when they sent it over, it didn't include that. So, we need to get that paid.
Okay. It's precinct four, Gene Ray. Dwayne, they on the way over now?
Yeah, she's fixing to bring them over there.
You want to email those, Dwayne, or?
If you scan, if they're scanned, then just email it to me. I can print it right here. They're muted.
We already got them printed, and she's on the way bringing them over there.
Okay. A little long to get those in. It'll take her a second. All right. We'll come back to that. Before we get done.
Can I hear something?
Sure.
I turned in the hours because I thought we were supposed to turn them into your office. It wouldn't necessarily. But we did get an excellence award from the state health services for our office for vital records. I think it's the first time the office has got this since 2015. So, it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, it is.
Congratulations.
There's a couple of things that they want us to improve that at some point in the future we're going to have to discuss, but yeah, we're on the right track. So, my staff deserves a, uh.
How are things coming with our case? Is it still ongoing?
Yes, they were supposed to put the shelves in this week, but something happened and it got delayed. So, we've got a whole bunch of books coming in a couple of weeks and a whole bunch more going out. But I guess it's looking very good. We've got space cleared out for the collection to, it's going to be renovated, yeah. But it's going to take a few years to do it, but they're moving along.
Easy, deep concentration. Sheriff? Yeah, hold you on.
Got it.
Yeah, there it is, all right. You had some old books over archived books that we like, books we like archived that were over in the old records office next toward to your office.
Yes, sir.
Some of those ones, you know, that were quite interesting to read where people would pay their fines with three dozen eggs or trade some chickens. And I'll, I'll, those books still there, we ever get them.
I'm sorry, Judge, I couldn't get all that.
Okay. Some of those older ledgers that you had in the, the record storage building next to your office. There was really old books in there that I'd like to get to leave, to get those saved, I guess the best way to say it. But some of them were like, where people would pay their fines to the county with three dozen eggs or two chickens or whatever. I think you read some of those, and I know I read some of them. I don't know if those are still there or if we picked those up yet.
I don't know, Chief Nealon's there, he might could answer your question better.
It should be, there's still there? Okay, sir. We got an answer, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yeah, they are interesting to read.
They are interesting to read, they really are.
Yeah, back in the early nineteen hundreds, the ladies spent five days in jail.
For an untidy house.
Yes.
What a welcome out.
I'm not creating more work in chambers, but over there in the surveyor's office, we have mountains of old books.
Are they?
Signature of land and conveyances and stuff like that.
We can put them in the group. That's the whole point of that, uh, that fee is to preserve our history and stuff.
Did y'all work anything out with the library, maybe stores of those items?
They don't have any space. But we're, yeah, maybe someday, but at this point, anyway, they just don't have the space.
Add-on. Yeah, we're waiting our track star longer to get here, so.
Did they decide to get the list, did they?
Yes.
Oh, so we're, we're.
Yeah? Okay. You live? Can we see it?
Um, this one?
That's just expensive for. Stuff from Dwayne to add-on to the, uh. Here it is. There, man.
Who we waiting for Natalie?
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, Natalie.
All right. Man, that only add-on was just the.
The training.
Training, okay, all right. We have everything else. All right, y'all have R2, take them up and everything, they're my good. Your ten motion.
We approve the consent agenda with the additions underway.
All right. Got a motion to second to approve this consent agenda with the two additions, all the papers say aye. Likewise, mayors, and that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Your agenda, seven point one, consider to approve amendment number four to the base contract for Burns Architecture and County Court of Law, number two, for a fixed sum of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is their fee on the design fee for Burns Architecture. And Harold, do we have any other information? I think that pretty much sums it up.
Yeah.
So, we get this done, then we can get started with the, all the design criteria. Well, we have the design criteria, but we'll have all the construction documents we need to go and get started. Okay.
I think this is kind of extremely high, forty-six thousand dollars to design a existing office space or county court at law. You know, I don't see that the work being done would even come close to the forty-six thousand, because I noticed in here, this has nothing to do with the actual work. This is just planning and of, we have everything to do this.
Harold.
We have Harold to do our bidding instead of hiring somebody to do that for us. Still is a little bit, a little bit expensive to be paying right now.
Well, I see your point, but also let's take into consideration how many redesigns we've had when we got a lot of fingers stuck in the, and we finally came up with a final option, and then that is going to take care of all the other options that we had. And then this will be the final, which will, this will create all the construction documents for a hard bid.
Good, on the purchase performance, you know, on these construction projects, we're going to follow, make sure we're following purchasing laws. And I think Stephanie's here, have her assigned to that, so she has been kind of dogging behind Mr. Burns and talking to him. I don't know if she has anything to add from here.
Stephanie, anything to add?
No.
Nope. It is what it is, okay. All right.
Jay?
Yeah?
Do we even have a contract with these people?
Yes.
Okay, maybe I'm, uh, maybe I'm not remembering, but I don't ever remember passing that in Commissioners Court.
Uh, back in the summer.
Yeah, so we have a master contract with them, and then for each individual project, you know, we have an amendment that is passed for that specific project.
Okay, so this was included into the master contract, Matthew?
Yes, so this amends the master contract for this specific work.
Okay.
So that more or less all the usual terms of the agreement, you know, you don't have to have four, in this case, separate contracts, each, you know, twenty, twenty-five pages long, but one twenty-page long one with two or three-page amendments for each new additional project. But that, I mean, you know, if you, if the court doesn't pass this, then it stops this project in its tracks.
And this project being the design of that county court at law, number two?
That's correct.
Bruce, what, what is it? What is it exactly we need to spend forty-six thousand dollars on, or Jay, to complete that, that courtroom?
No, this is not a completion. This is just to have Burns tell us what to do, or them lining up everything for us to do. I mean, for them to get contractors for us to do, because after we spend the forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, we're still going to have to pay the contractors to do the work. And that I see it, that I've been to understand is all the demo has already been done. The, it needs some walls and stuff put in it that I believe Stephanie has been working on contractors.
So, this is a, so this is just basically a design?
Yes.
Well, it's overseeing, it's overseeing the construction also, I believe.
And the break, the breakdown of the design phase, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty, bidding phase, four thousand, four hundred, and construction administration phase, nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
Um, he, he is going to be overseeing the project as far as construction and things. He will be helping select the bidder, if it's qualified to do the work. There are some things in that courtroom that when things are pulled up and other things maybe to be addressed that come up, that someone with his knowledge and know how I feel to address that and get it done properly.
Well, and time to bear also, but this is going to be the total design, all the construction documents, and then also helping to choose a bidder, and then also have the oversight on completion of the project.
He's going to oversee it completely.
Got that, Leon?
Yeah, I just don't understand why we need to pay that much money to, 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 to place benches and maybe an officer too in there. That, that, you know, that to me is, sounds extraordinarily expensive.
Leon, this is Lee. I've, I've been in a couple of those meetings with regards to the design issues, and the difficulty with that space is there's four giant pillars in the middle of the room that can't be moved, and they obscure jury access, jury vision, being able to set up the witness box, the jury, the judge, everyone where they're not, their view and their, uh, being obscured. But it's, it's a complicated design for that reason, and I think that's why it's been so hard to get one that works. Field of view is a big, big problem, especially when you consider seating a twelve, fourteen-person jury in there, and that's kind of been the holdup. So, I imagine the tricky part is getting it all laid out in such a way that we're not obscuring or, uh, you know, creating problems with the, with trials, with jury trials.
Okay, so what you're saying, Ms. Lee, is that, uh, due to the nature of the courtroom, the way it's set up, that it would be to our best interest to, uh, to hi- hire this individual, or not hire him, but to pay him this fee?
I think you need a specialist to make sure it gets laid out properly, that's all I'm saying. Um, I can't speak to whether this is an exorbitant amount of money or not, but I know that it is a complicated build for a courtroom because of those pillars sitting where they are in that red. Any, I mean, if you walk in there and you try to sit down and look around any which way you go, you're, you've got obstructions in the view. I think Matt can attest to this, I think he's been down there too. But putting a jury, uh, box in there and having a jury trial in there is problematic, and that's why it's been such a mess. There was a discussion about not even having a jury space in there, but, you know, I think that they're insisting on that, and, and that's where it comes, becomes a problem, is trying to make it where you can have people in there, jury and, you know, witnesses, the whole nine yards, and their view and access is it being obstructed by those pillars.
Lee is correct, at least in my view, the, I can't speak to that amount of money, but I can say that yes, that space is difficult to design for based on that.
Okay, thank you, Matthew.
Sure.
One, one question I have. I know this courtroom has been, this space has been designed and redesigned and designed. What we're actually paying for is the actual design of the courtroom that's going into effect and not the redesigns. I know one time it was going to be repurposed, would have some offices in there. Are we paying for that, or are we just paying for the work done for the courtroom?
It'd be all inclusive, the way I understand it.
Probably all inclusive. I'm sure there's going to be some design revision fees in there, Dwayne, simply because architect's not going to work for free. And we've changed that design probably four times since we started on it, and we finally came up with a final design that everyone is, is pleased with, especially to all the judges that would be using that, that place or that space. So, uh, this would include the construction drawings, the construction documents, the help in picking the proper contractors, since it'll be a hard bid, and also the oversight of the construction as it continues until its final approval and acceptance. And that will be, uh, the architect himself will be doing the oversight of this, which I think is a great idea, because here, this building, uh, nineteen thirty-three, that addition was built in nineteen fifty-seven. There's a lot of things that you're going to get into that were maybe commonplace in nineteen fifty-seven and not commonplace as far as either remodel, rebuild, build out. And if there's any change orders that are to be included with review by the architect to the contract itself, these would be reviewed by the architect, approved or denied, one way or the other. So, considering the, the age of the building and the timing is, you know, it, it's towards pleasure either way, but that's what the number is.
Matthew?
Yes.
What, what's your recommendation on this?
Well, so, if I'm, if I'm receiving Dwayne's, uh, uh, signals well enough for his, uh, I, I think the concern is have, are we paying for work that's been performed when there wasn't a contract in place? And, and, you know, the, I know the, the way Kenny Burns likes to do things is instead of charging by the hour, what he likes to do is give a total fee. Say, this is it, the flat fee. I don't know, based on what this price is and what's in, in the packet, how much of that is for redesigns, et cetera, you know? Uh, and so, it's kind of a complicated issue. We, we might want to take a look at this, Dwayne and I, a little bit more. I'm not sure what you think, Dwayne.
Yeah, so, so based on what you're saying, uh, we need to table this for the time being, and let's let you look at it in a little more depth.
Yes. Yeah, do you agree, Dwayne?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, I'm, with that recommendation, I'm going to make the motion that we table it for the time being and to allow Matthew and Dwayne to get into it in a little more depth.
Second.
All right. Bruce, Leon, second, and Bruce, to table this. We'll bring it back into the next meeting, but first being defended, all the papers say aye. Likewise, mayors, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven point two, consider to approve amendment to agreement with Tyler Technologies for the mod, moderie online dispute resolution component to allow the fees owed to Tyler to be paid from the alternative dispute resolution court cost. And Matthew, you want to, since the legalese is going to be a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, so moderie is a component of the, you know, Tyler software that we're purchasing that we're actually going to go live on the eighth. It's, it's a pretty clever idea, so, um, uh, judges could order, uh, parties at what, you know, whether it's family law or real estate or whatever, to engage in alternative dispute resolution through this somewhat automated system called moderie. And it, it'll, it's a portal online that allows the parties to communicate and, you know, if need be for the court to review their communications and hopefully come to a resolution of the, of the claims that they have. It can, that portion, what we would have to pay Tyler, can be recouped or paid out of the alternate dispute resolution court costs, but we needed to amend the original agreement to make sure that we can capture that court cost and send it onto them. So, we would still be paying Tyler, but we'd be capturing that cost from the alternative dispute resolution court cost. So, I would, I would ask Commissioners Court to approve it.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Got a motion, Bruce, second, Leon, to approve. All three of you say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, mayors, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next is a little IT issue, seven point three, consider to approve service agreement with Texas Association of Counties, County Information Resource Agency to use Sierra email and other services, including an upgrade to Office three sixty-five for county emails. And Nick, are you here to say?
Yes, sir. Hey, you're over here. Live and in person. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, so this basically comes down to is that Sierra's moving the way our web now is hosted, so we're going to have to pay a little bit increase to go to this new Office three sixty-five hosting. There's also another provision in there that we could knock out, two birds with one stone, as I'd like to say. It's currently in the county, being here, going to different departments and offices and everything. Microsoft Office Suite is just across the board, different versions. Every department's done their own thing. There's an option in here that would grant us, every user in the county will get email hosting along with an unlimited Microsoft three sixty-five license per user. So, this could include all the sheriff's offices, all the constables' patrol units, MBTs, all the software related. I believe it's nineteen dollars and ninety cents per month per user, but that's a double duty. That's email hosting and the software application. If we don't go with that route, then it's going to leave, I think it's seven dollars and ninety cents per user is the new cost that we're going to have to, to go for anyways. But my personal opinion, if there was a way that we could budget in to do the fuller price, that solves two issues that I've come across between software licensing and it just, it comes with the email package as well. It is a significant increase, but it does give us more benefit going down the road, because we're going to constantly be growing, and then we won't have to worry about licensing as it's a one-stop shop. It's everything in one package. But needless to say, that's kind of the clarification is on those two items. Good?
Judge, could I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Of Nick, would this allow us to move away those offices that are already on Office three sixty-five to, to this? When, and we'd be able to reduce those costs?
Yes, that's the, that's the ultimate end goal is, you know, like with y'all's office, per se, and the district attorneys, you know, you all are kind of combined with that. Who put us all under a blanket account for the entire county? So, all employees, all the users, so that would be possible. You guys would no longer have to pay, per se, for your marketing.
And not to get too in the weeds here, but does that include SharePoint access as well?
Yes, from what I saw on the piece of paper, it should, Drive and everything.
Ah, so it's, it's pretty much identical to what we have?
But it's just, it would be every new user, every current user will now have, we won't have a licensing issue because everyone, so, and then you can also install it on either desktops, laptops, and then there's also, so it's, it's a very nice package. It's just a little bit more expensive.
Do we have a roundabout cost of how much?
Um, not off the top of my, I believe it's, I believe it's nineteen dollars and ninety cents per user.
But Nick, I'm sorry, how much?
I believe it's nineteen ninety, uh, per user, so it's, it's going to be a significant increase. But that, currently, I think we're at over three hundred plus email users actively. Now, if we want to address this another time, we can, but we are going to have to move up to at least seven dollars and ninety cents for the mail. seven dollar ninety cents for the mail migration and the new, uh, steps going forward. Uh, but that's just kind of our options for right now.
So basically, three hundred to nineteen six thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Dwayne? Dwayne?
Yes?
Um, we're looking at this item on here on the, uh, at three hundred users, you said?
I believe so, yes.
At nineteen, we're looking at six thousand more dollars to increase this. Yes, we do have the funding?
What's the total cost?
Oh, cost, uh, I can do that for you though. Um, it's, it's per user and at least per month too, so it's, it's gonna, so it's six thousand, yes.
Right now, I mean, each individual department is paying for their own, you know, so I have fifteen three sixty-five users.
Correct.
But we're also getting double the, the, we're also getting the whole office. Because that's one of the big things. That's the main software we use in the county. Everybody uses it. And since everyone's across the board doing different things, this in the IT department helps me manage and get everybody on the same page. All the licenses are in the same area.
We can.
Are we gonna pay for it individually by department or is it gonna be one big license for the county?
It would be one big license for the county.
So that cost would be coming out of some other, because I'm not sure.
Dwayne, you say, uh, you say you're good with the price?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, good session. Greg to approve. And I don't think so. All favors say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven point four, permanent inspections. Uh, David, see you there somewhere. There you are. Absolute grandbaby.
That grandbaby's great.
Thank you, sleep, good morning. David just, uh, his oldest son just had a, wife just had a brother do it last week. Congratulations. Yeah. I don't have a cigar yet, by the way.
I'll take care of that this afternoon.
All right. Uh, seven point four, consider and approve the preliminary plat for San Jose section nine A. And this is what we tabled prior, David?
Yes, sir, that is correct. It was tabled in my absence. Um, as you can see, under my normal operating procedures, I've enclosed in your packet the approval letter from LJA for the preliminary plat for section nine A of San Jose. So I'm gonna ask you to approve the preliminary plat.
Make a motion to approve. Got a motion from Bruce. Second. Second from Greg. Likewise, next. Was that an aye, Leon?
Yes.
You had your microphone on.
All right.
See, your microphone must have been off. All right, so, uh, I would say we're full passes. Yes. Seven point five, permanent inspection. David, we got one more to go. Consider to approve the preliminary plat for San Jose subdivision section ten.
Your honor, this is exactly the same situation as nine A. It's a separate section that has been submitted. Uh, LJA has gone through it. They have approved it for preliminary plat approval, so we have submitted it, uh, to the court this morning and we ask you to approve this preliminary plat.
I'll have to read letters.
Yeah, okay. They meet all our requirements.
Yes, sir. If you look in your package, you'll see that, uh, LJA has given us a letter that states that it does meet all of our requirements for preliminary plat.
Make a motion to approve.
Backing.
I'll let Leon pitch to that, I guess. Uh, motion from Bruce. Second from Leon to approve. All favors say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven point six, permanent inspection. David, we got one more for you. Consider to approve request for payment from LJ Engineering, number two oh, two oh, two five, five nine six, and a GLO draw request number four.
Yes, so this is the, uh, infrastructure grant that we've got working with the General Land Office of Texas. I'll be sending out this afternoon a listing to each one of the commissioners showing exactly what projects we're gonna do. I think, uh, for instance, in Mr. Carbowski's precinct, I believe the primary line item of work is improvements to CR four oh one. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So we'll be sending those out. Most of these work, uh, work assignments are running somewhere in a million dollars per precinct. So LJA is asking that they be paid on this thing. Uh, this is an approved payment for the efforts that they have already put into designing uh, and bidding this process. Now, we are actually out four bids right now and those will be taken in two weeks and, uh, we will move forward and I hope to be under construction by mid to late April of this year.
Amen. I make the motion we approve.
Got a motion from Leon, second Greg to approve. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Judge, if I might, Mr. Arthur, would you please sign this draw document before you leave the courthouse today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Number seven point seven, uh, Mr. Whitmire's not here today and I believe that, uh, he did call or sent a, he got requested this item be withdrawn from the agenda. So I would ask him to take no action. Make the motion, take no action. Yeah, motion from Bruce, second Greg and Leon today. Let's, uh, just take Greg's time then. All favors say aye. Likewise, next. That motion carries. Uh, seven point eight, County Court Law number two, uh, Judge Hinch. Consider and approve subscription for West Proflex, takes state primary court for government. What is that, Lee?
Westlaw.
Westlaw, yeah.
Well, I guess it's a, Matt can probably answer better. It's a package of Westlaw.
Okay.
Make the motion we approve.
Got a motion from Leon, second Greg to approve. All favors say aye. Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven point nine. Harold, I got a bunch of the, to work through this. Are you, you wanna walk up this way?
Tell me you can hear the next one.
Huh?
Not go to the next one?
Okay, all right. Well, yeah.
We got our insurance careers.
Ben and Todd are here. They can explain a lot better than we can all actually, we'll agree to. Seven point nine is considered to approve the selection of liability insurances at renewal date of two five, ten twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-one, including the general liability, automobile liability, fiscal damage, property, contractor equipment, public entity management liability, employment practices, law enforcement liability, employment benefit plan administration liability, cyber crime liability, and umbrella coverage. And I know y'all have been working on this and had the opportunity to check on it a little bit. And, uh, if I would, uh, Todd, you, Ben, come on up and visit for this and tell us what you got.
Sure, good morning, thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, everyone. Uh, we, uh, as you know, with the addition of the jail recently, we moved from travelers to one beacon on the casualty side. This is your, your lawyer renewal. We did that on a full term basis. One beacon came in with very, very good, very, very renewal. We bill with the, uh, with the property, with the addition of the jails, we, uh, we go out and gotten different, different options for the county with the increase in values and just changes. It's a really hard topic right now. So that's kind of the, the big picture. I'm gonna let, let this up.
Yes, and as Todd said, it, it feels like we've been working on insurance nonstop this year with the addition of the jail.
You get it?
Um, and as Todd said, One Beacon did us a, a major favor in October, slamming that, taking us out of the jail. Um, that was, that was very tough, but worked out really well for the county. And obviously with that, we added twenty-one million dollars of property. Changes our property schedule significantly. And so it's starting to where we need to start looking at alternatives as opposed to just buying insurance and doing the, the program, you know, just moving forward in the same fashion. So we've looked at alternatives, three different options for consideration today just to make sure, um, that your insurance program is matching for your risk appetite. And so these options are highlighted in different colors. And so what we'll do is we'll just start with that twenty twenty column. What that looks at is that is showing you, this is what our annualized premiums were in twenty twenty when we take into consideration the addition of the jail. And obviously, at inception of the policies last year, it was a much different story. Just to put that into perspective, the law enforcement's up twenty-two percent, employee count is up forty-seven percent, auto liability vehicles is up twenty percent, physical damage covering, but the actual body of that vehicle's up thirteen percent and our property values are up sixty percent since inception of February fifth, twenty twenty to the inception of the twenty twenty-one policy. So that annualized premium is eight forty-eight, eight twenty-four. And then we have three options here. As Todd said, the casualty renewal, which is your general liability, public officials, law enforcement, auto liability, et cetera, was a very favorable renewal. It was an eight percent rate decrease relative to a thousand dollars in budget. The property market is much different than the casualty market right now. And twenty twenty was the most active hurricane season ever recorded in the United States. We had more hurricanes make landfall in the United States than ever before. And just because those hurricanes only hit Texas doesn't mean that Texas rates aren't impacted because it's the same insurance company as that, right? Postal Insurance from Brownsville all the way to New York City. So if they're impacted anywhere, it's gonna impact everybody's rates. So when Hurricane R we hit here, people in Florida, those public entities, their rates were impacted. And so that's what we've got going on in the twenty twenty-one, um, marketplace. It would've been really easy for us just to walk in here and say, hey, option one, here's your renewal. Your property insurance has gone from two thirty to two ninety. That's the market. But we wanted to show the county alternatives to make sure that, um, the risk appetite aligns with the program. So let's just go through those differences to where we have an understanding of, of the potential risk we would be taking if we looked at one of these alternatives. Option one, two, and three are all the same until we get to the very bottom of property and equipment. The, the blue option, option one, gives us full limits, meaning if, if a storm were to happen or occur in Liberty County and every single building's damaged, we would have covers for every single building. That's how we currently have it today. The deductible for all other perils, fire, theft, et cetera, is ten thousand dollars. Our name storm hurricane deductible is one percent of the building value that's damaged. And then our low hazard flood deductible is fifty thousand. That premium for the property is two ninety for fifty-one. Option two is a little different. It's taking on some additional risk. The only difference between option one and option two is option two is saying, instead of having full limits, you're gonna have a twenty-five million dollar per occurrence. Meaning if every building is damaged, the most the insurance company's gonna pay is twenty-five million dollars. Every building is still covered. It's just now we don't have full limits. And that premium is two hundred, called two hundred and forty thousand. So it saves us about fifty grand. Option three is the same as option two on a per occurrence, except the name storm deductible increases from one percent to two percent. And so what that means is, let's take the jail for example. It's a twenty-one million dollar building. We'll use twenty million for ease of math. If a name storm causes any damage to that today, the deductible's one percent of that building, so two hundred thousand dollars before we collect any insurance proceeds. On a two percent deductible is four hundred thousand. And so you multiply that across the county assets. For example, this building that we're in right now, it's, once we get the elections equipment out of here for, on the schedule, it's called an eight million dollar building. The deductible is eighty thousand, but we have a minimum of a hundred, so it's a hundred thousand for this building. If we take on a two percent, then it's a hundred and sixty thousand. So that would save an additional twenty-seven thousand if we wanted to take on that risk. According to the model, this is what underwriters underwrite on, a one in five thousand year storm would cause about twenty-five million dollars of damage in the county. If I, the only concern I have with that is I don't know if we are very confident in our values within the county. We haven't done an appraisal in a long time from a replacement cost standpoint. I don't think we really have a good understanding of this. Is this building an eight million dollar to replace or is it a ten million dollar to replace?
I'd say closer to a hundred billion. Today's put the numbers, yeah.
So that is my concern. The model doesn't know if we are under-valued and if we are, then the model really isn't that adequate. But what I would tell you is as we continue to add construction, this is something that we're gonna wanna evaluate, especially in a hard property market. It's now uncommon for a lot of large property owners to buy per occurrence limits um, simply because if we don't, we're just gonna continue to pay absorbent premiums and the reality is, are we ever gonna have that claim or not? My recommendation, if you were to go with an option two or an option three, is we need to get an appraisal done. It's where a company comes out and appraises every single building. They advise construction costs, they advise the construction type, roof type, et cetera, and it provides a lot of quality underwriting data as well that will help potentially reduce rates at a form of time of an upcoming renewal, just where we can make sure that we're comfortable with that twenty-five million dollar per occurrence. If we come back and from this appraisal and find out, whoa, we're underinsured by twenty percent, let's rerun the model. Does the model still say that a one in five thousand year event isn't gonna cause more than twenty-five million dollars of damage? If it says something other than that, and we can always look at adding an extra five million or ten million of limit and look at it from that perspective. If we went with option one, I still say we need to do an appraisal.
Yeah. Just so. In twenty twenty, we did have fifty-six thousand total on our limit. And now we, we would, option two or three, we would be bringing that maximum down to twenty-five million.
Correct.
Your next line, um, AOP deductible.
Yep.
Exactly what is that?
So all other perils, and, and thank you for bringing that, because that is the option. I mean, that's the difference between option three and option two as well.
Yeah, twenty, there's only five thousand.
Correct.
Is what we paid twenty, now.
Correct.
Now it's gonna go up to ten thousand, but on option three is twenty-five thousand.
Option three, we presented option three because I'm never, we're never gonna walk in here and tell you that you have to spend more money on insurance. We're gonna find a way to make sure there's a way to save money. And so all other perils is fire, theft. If a pipe bursts and caused water damage, I mean, your building's not gonna pay for a pipe, but it's gonna pay for the, the, uh, consequential damage. So things of that nature. Fire, that, a tree falls on the building, et cetera. And so there's a substantial difference in the premium and that's why we really wanted to make sure we presented this to you to where we can.
But between what we're paying right now and option one, you're looking at eighty thousand dollars more a year?
Eighty thousand dollars more a year, which is still in that, if you look at that bottom line.
That's, that's with the jail included.
Correct. And so that, what that minus two is showing you is we're spending two percent less on option one relative to a thousand dollars of budget than we did last year. If we went with option two, it's seven percent less. If we went with option three, it's ten percent less. And then that very bottom line item is just to show you under any of these options, that's still our relative cost compared to twenty fifteen. So we're still on a really good run, a six-year run of production and premium cost relative to our, to our budget.
Another thing to consider, Bruce, on this, uh, with option one, we have time built in to now for an appraisal for all facilities. So, uh, I think since this needs to be done by February the fifth.
So I think since this needs to be done by February the fifth, that's just my, my take on it. So I don't think you're going to find a creditor walking here and knock out all the Thai facilities.
Yeah.
Now, it only takes, we would, we, we've got firms that we would recommend. There's a few that come to mind to do a lot of public entities. Typically, they can get scheduled anywhere from two to four weeks out, and it's, it's a solid week to two week project.
I hope what we're talking about is protecting the taxpayers' assets. And what is not protected under insurance comes out of taxpayer money.
Yeah, once you're looking at twenty fifteen, we had thirty-eight million in assets, twenty-twenty fifty-one billion. And now with the addition of the jails, it's six billion. And actually, almost it's seven billion. Am I reading that right, Ben?
Yeah, and, and just to put that in perspective, we have not looked at the values since twenty-fifteen.
Yeah.
And I think we all know the construction cost today is more than it was six years ago.
Yeah, maybe still getting the, the bottomless two by four and six.
Especially right now.
All right, any further discussion? What is the court's pleasure?
Dwayne, what's your thoughts on this?
Dwayne?
Michelle's decision, but, uh, you know, I agree with the recommendation.
Harold, what do you think?
It depends on how much risk we want to take on, whether, uh, especially like you said, I won't put on the agenda to see if y'all want paper and all the like, which they told us last year we're here, we need to do that, like we think.
I'd like to do that, but I think we have time to do that this year.
Still considering back to two thousand and fifteen, I think we're still under, we were at that time.
One quick question, Ben. Todd, getting an appraisal, would you want like a a real estate agent type appraiser? Would you prefer a more professional company that would do a conditional assessment of all?
Yeah, so the difference between a real estate company and, and a, an appraiser is a real estate company might give you market value, and that's not what insurance companies are going to pay. So there's a few firms, Duffin Phelps is a really big one, and then C-Biz is a really big one. But what we would do is send both of them, your statement of values, they would provide quotes back, and we can provide them to, to Harold and Cheryl. But from a cost perspective, I wouldn't expect it to be any more than twelve grand, somewhere in there. It's a, it's a beautiful one.
Correct. That's what I get, they clarified, I guess, by a question.
Yeah, yeah, it's replacement cost.
We can't just take a phone call and split.
Right.
And even though he's darn good when he does.
And, and furthermore, it does help with underwriting information. The more quality information that underwriters have, the more comfortable they are with the risk. And what you hope with that is more favorable terms and rates that they're going to provide to the county.
Okay.
God forbid there's ever a big practical loss that would make the county process a lot harder.
Yeah. All right. Lea, you got anything else?
That's it.
All right. Let's call for a vote, uh, one, a motion, second, first.
Go seek an option.
And an option.
Make a motion to accept option one.
A second. All right, get a motion for Bruce. Second, Greg to accept option number one. All the favor say aye. Likewise, thanks. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, here. Let's see if we can get to Chief Scott to drive. Considering that car had two hundred thousand miles on it and one slight pit bug. Seven point ten, considered through purchase and replacement of a vehicle for juvenile probation through the Bible.
Okay, last week, Anthony has a two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer with, I'd say, close to two hundred thousand miles on it. Still looks good on the outside, but he's having problems with it. They took it down to have it looked at. They gave him a quote of seven hundred and thirty-three dollars or something like that. And then before he picked it out, it came back, eighteen hundred dollars, problems with it. And then it got another, I think it's twenty-four hundred dollars. Seven hundred, let's just hang on, look at it, because when you look at your blue, blue book value, it's always like, if it's in good condition, it's like four hundred and three hundred dollars. So we want to pay that, get it fixed up, and I don't know, so it's, it's Joe's choice. So Stephanie had her call around and try to find something on the lot, not, not something. Probably get a better price if we get something we can order, but we're trying to find something on the lot.
Value in twenty-twenty is just, you know, this is twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah. So she found three. One of the very last one on there is a Ford Escape. Well, you know, Anthony. I wouldn't have been wanting, he's way bigger than I am. The next one, the second one, is a, I think it's a used, it's a twenty-twenty Dodge Caravan, was a demonstrator, I think, Stephanie said, twenty-three thousand, six thirty-four. And then the one that's comparable to what he has now is a twenty-twenty-one Chevy Traverse, but it's twenty-nine thousand, forty-two. So options are, y'all can pick, y'all can do nothing. Y'all can pick one of these, or y'all can settle limit. Everything buys me, we go co-op. And I'd say, y'all set a twenty-five thousand dollar limit or thirty, we can keep looking till we find something on the lot. It's whatever y'all want to do. If you, uh, the Traverse, if you go with that, it's on a car called Goodbye. I don't know, I won't remember, we decided to use them all the way. So Joe's decision, you know, which direction you want to build on this?
The funding of this coming out of where?
I don't know, something, Dwayne, I may be unaware of it, and we'll have to answer that.
Dwayne?
It would come out of non-departmental capital outlay.
And he also has, they have another car, we had this one a lot over Ford, I think, which they haven't really used. So at least two, if y'all do this, the two he has now are going to option probably in March. So we'll get some of that from them.
Okay. Knowing who it's going for, I would hate to choose his vehicle. Bar him.
They can get the biggest one.
Could we just leave it in the hands of the, approve this and leave the choice to the person agent?
Yeah, just find something under thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you want to do.
Make a motion for proof with a limit of thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Uh, sir.
Yeah, motion for Bruce, second, Greg to approve with the tenant, thirty thousand dollars for a vehicle for juvenile probation. All the favor say aye. Likewise, thanks. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven one one one, purchasing, we'll see. Consider it approved as upgrade to the Cleveland Annex Phone System for forty-four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety cents with sixty percent down, service activation with a non-recurring charge of two thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars, one penny, and a monthly charge of four hundred and two dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, last week, Matt from A1 called me and said the Cleveland Annex Phone System had been shut down. They didn't bill for pay the whole day. He, he, as our representative, he contacted, we got it backed up. And I think he explained that the problem is, they're saying what they have announced off speed equipment that they're not going to support, but all that, Matt.
Hold on, Matt.
Morning, Harold.
Call up this Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Let everybody see, see you.
All right. Harold's exactly right. Basically, we, the city phone called Cleveland's phones were down, closed this one.
Okay.
And upon calling their tech support, they ended up calling me back like that, around six, six-thirty. And they said that it's a good thing that I called because the shutdown was intentional. So when we, yeah, that's how I reacted to it. Um, so when we originally signed contracts, it was with Level Three. Level Three's been bought out by CenturyLink. So CenturyLink, from what I guess, is trying to beat to Michigan, Level Three's old equipment. Get over on their new services with CenturyLink. And in doing so, they just shut us off, which I'm not too crazy about that. They said if I had called in, I think it was seven days, we could not have turned the circuit back on. So with that being said, we let them give us quotes and so forth to find out moving forward with them, and the price more than doubled on a monthly scale. So we explored the options of upgrading their phone system to support the same service and things that we're starting to roll out to the rest of the county. And the price is going to stay the same for what we're paying right now to Level Three. The only problem was our, the phone system in Cleveland would not support the new services. So we need to spend a little bit to upgrade their phone system to the same system everybody else in the county has, and then we can also just get away from Level Three altogether.
This is not with the same company to turn our phones off.
That is correct. I want to get away from that.
Yes.
Things feel better.
Yeah, I don't like the way they handled it for that reason. I'm just going to go somewhere else.
Some phone call or probably surprised.
Correct. And, and I've been requesting some type of information about who they notified. You know, they should have given us at least thirty to sixty days notice for this, and they can't ever provide that information. They agreed that they should have, and they never could provide, these were their contacts.
All right. Dwayne, you have any problems with this?
That's out of my area of expertise. With what Matt says and Nick recommended the same thing, so I have no trouble with it. I'll find the money.
How departmental.
How departmental.
Court's pleasure. Motion, Greg, to approve.
Second.
Second, Bruce. All the favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Matt.
Likewise, thanks. That motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Seven point one two, purchasing, Harold C. Consider it approved a change in award bidder for grade one to two type A limestone base, Road Bridge one, Redwood location, Road Bridge two, Hardwood location, number twenty-one oh one. Specification concerning quality of products, I believe that might be the call right here.
Yeah, well, I don't know. I might have did a little more research on inscription of anyone, yeah, that's, that's, yeah. Um, I showed you what's going on. We have Hanson Products in two locations for limestone base. We have, Wokhan has all reference for location five eleven. Uh, we had a little problem, I think, with Hanson last year on the size of the rock, but I think they got straightened out. This year, precinct one, and I think maybe precinct two. Uh, the material they're getting, they say is powdering, I'm not sure how you describe it.
Yes, yes, yes.
And they said that has to do with the binds in it when you do, through the sieve, sieve to get the proper size. Uh, so when they want to use it, they said it doesn't work. So I called, according to our specs, what we did is quality of products. Uh, precinct one sent me a letter on what's wrong with us. They said more granite based than one limestone base. I contacted the company, Hanson, and thought the gentleman, who was the guy that quoted, and the terminal manager, and I forget what the other guest title was. According to them, uh, again, our specs asked for it to be the two thousand fourteen Department of Transportation specs. According to them, it fits under that.
If what, Harold?
It's under the text dot specification, what yourself. They said it's from the same piles that they used last year. Last year, this time makes it more of a problem. Actually, we bought a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So now we come back to this and say pile. So I think our options would be, uh, and I also talked to that Wokhan, he's supposed to call me back today. I talked to him at Lee last week when we did the bid. He said, everything, you know, we have four type different limestone bases in our action. He said every one of those is grade one type A, so we just did one this year. And he said everybody in this, I don't know exactly what we're asking for, for that. According to Hanson, text dot uses their product. So I think the options are, uh, you can have a test if like you're ready to space dot. You can probably discuss it with them and see if it comes some conclusion or something we can make difference. Or I think you can go back and we can get limestone material again, but have more stringent specifications of the exact.
Leon, last year, y'all was, y'all was buying this, and y'all had problems out of it also.
Correct.
But problem, uh, we bought it last year and have been buying it because we couldn't buy, buy anything else. And that's why we have requested for, to not buy this product or, uh, I'm, I'm not a professional when it comes to the consistency or view. Know that it doesn't blend, it doesn't set up like normal limestone that we have been getting. Right, you're having the same problem as your barn pump too.
Someone give us the specs or what you're looking for, pretty detailed. Because I mean, if you go through the text, like we get limestone base, there's pages and pages of different gradations and sieve sizes.
I mean, about to call three quarters, that base for dust.
And I, and I looked at a lot of other counties, and some harder counties have a lot more detail. Probably have roads compared, or smaller counties like us that don't.
Did we have someone like LDA or into the specifications of that?
Rebid it?
I just, I, I know.
Maybe get something to read some of that.
Yeah, it's, uh, I went in a lot of roads this, this past year and coming up. This stuff does not blend, doesn't set up like a normal base that we've been getting. Uh, just can't, can't use it.
Yeah, two, two limitations have broken. And then the one that Redwood's made was somebody ten cents.
Ten cents difference, difference in margins.
But I can't find it regularly. I never, if ever, it's just, you know, I'm dating the yard. Well, I would suggest also, just play it safe and do all the first and last, let's just rebid it. Let's get better specifications, a little more narrow, we'll be able to go through that.
Okay. So we're asking for this, uh, agenda item to rebid?
Yeah. Uh, I would say rebid.
Okay.
And also, you know, we really get Hanson, still going to be fair and transparent, I hope Hanson can, you can think we don't have to.
Make a motion to rebid and have a company look at and specify what we need to bid. Correct description, discrepancy, correct description of the line base.
Uh, if that's seeing if he wants to begin or something. Yeah, uh, I don't know, you know, Stephanie came from Montgomery County, I think they're road engineer for sure. But she probably has some people, she can contact them, but she has to go to the leadership with them and wants to talk to them, or they can give us some.
I have a current description of the loop.
And that's why I get to specify LDA, that way you can talk to people who are there and ask.
Okay. Yeah, motion for rebid, need a second.
That's a.
I'm, I'm with Greg, I miss, miss time, I'll catch you on the next one. All the favor say aye. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven thirteen, consider it approved, order granting a discretionary exemption under, uh, Montgomery Code two six two point zero two four four. Work at the jail, Montgomery Technology Systems LLC. That's with number zero seven nine zero for eighteen thousand three hundred. That's the zero seven nine three for twelve thousand three hundred. And I think our biggest question on this was discretionary, because
Yes.
It's a, it's, it's a component system. So you, you buy, you buy the stereo receiver, you buy the speakers, and then you buy a CD player. And if you want to have a booster over there, you buy that too. That's kind of what we're looking at.
Yeah, let me address that though.
All right.
All right, there are several different discretionary exemptions, like general level or something. Uh, the one I've been on here is an item necessary because of unforeseen damage to other property. We got this yell back from G O, we can all shake them, and we'll be back. And Matthew's going to have to, I would feel more comfortable with the increase of that. There's another one that says for auto, auto repairs and equipment repairs. I'm not real sure of this kind of, I don't know. And then there's another one for captive cars. But that falls under sole source.
Yeah.
And sole source from other county, their experience calls it, things sole source, and then later came up with sole source. It requires me to sign a letter and say y'all said it's sole source. Of course, I'll be comfortable that, so hold on to research and make sure.
Yeah.
That's how we source for it. So if Matthew agrees, it falls under the unforeseen damage to other property. And of course, in pain and death, it's a damage.
Well, that's.
Problem is, is the prisoners.
Yeah, well, they beat these call switches to pieces. Yeah. What else changed? Did they beat up over beside the cameras and call switches and each?
I think they don't have to, but we definitely did.
Matthew?
No, I believe it's within Commissioner's Court discretion to grant this exemption.
Further discussion? Court's pleasure. Now, I might also comment that part of this repair is part of what we have told the state commissioner, jail standards to take care of this matter, not, this is form their chief, but this is part of the system.
This is the thing we voiced on the status last week.
Yeah, especially, yeah. We approve that, we just want to come back and get this discretionary exemption included.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve for Bruce, second to Greg. All the favor say aye. Likewise, thanks. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven point one four, and you consider it approved special warranty deed with fee simple determinable condition containing one point two four two acres for Colony Ridge, Liberty County for the purpose of constructing a sheriff's department effects.
Yes, so this is a, a special warranty deed where Colony Ridge is going to give the county a little over an acre, acre point two outright. But there is a fee simple determinable condition on it, which says that we have to start construction on the sheriff's department there within a year and have it completed within three years. If we fail to do those, it reverts automatically back to Colony Ridge.
And I believe we do have the intention to build this for the one year at this time. Dwayne?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael, good.
Yeah, last second. Definitely.
Yeah, motion for Bruce, second to Greg to approve. All the favor say aye. Carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Seven point one five, consider it approved interlocal agreement, City of Kennedy for the maintenance of city streets. Mr. Wilson, that is in your neck of the woods, precinct four.
Yes.
That's your standard rebuild for your local agreement, correct?
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of been, we, what we've had done is I've gotten Matthew to give me some assistance on this. We've adjusted this. Now I'm going to let Matthew go ahead and explain it to you in more detail.
So this one's a little different than the other, the normal ones. You know, the normal ones are merely a promise that if the city identifies a project that they need some help on, that we promise will help them. But it, under the normal ones, it still requires an additional action on the part of the county and the city to, to, to do that work. This one is that more specific one. So it says that the county, that is precinct four, will grade and do patch repair on city streets for a, a monthly fee paid by City of Keneffick to, to the county of five hundred dollars.
Correct, Matthew.
What, I'm sorry, what is it?
It would be paid to precinct four.
Oh, fair, that's fair, yes. So, a, a, and this is not, and I, we drafted it, and Keneffick is, is very aware of it. This is not something where we're taking on responsibility of doing complete road rebuilds throughout the city. It's for grading and patch repair.
Dwayne, sure that didn't go back to general fund?
Don't you start it, Jake.
I'll let you argue that, Leon.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Bruce, second to Leon to approve. All the favor say aye. Likewise, thanks. You're always worth the cities. Number seven point one six, consider it approved resolution in support of the state of Texas and Texas political subdivisions, opioid abatement fund council and settlement allocation term sheet that determines the distribution mechanisms and amounts related to the settlement of the opioid lawsuit. Matthew?
Uh, Your Honor, I would ask that we skip to the executive session portion where you receive update from litigation counsel regarding this before, before we vote.
Okay, all right, we need a motion to second to move into the executive session this time. Motion for Bruce, second to Greg to move to the executive session. All the favor say aye. Likewise, thanks.
Matthew?
Yes.
Give me, uh, give me just a second, and I'll be right back with you.
No problem. Yeah, give everybody a second.
Forty-eight, back out of executive session. In the regular session, at this time, we'll look at seven point one six, consider it approved resolution in support of the state of Texas. And Texas political subdivisions opioid abatement fund council and settlement allocation term sheet, note board term sheet, that determines the distribution mechanisms and amounts related to the settlement of the opioid lawsuit. Any discussion? And if not, entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
That's for the resolution, correct, Leon?
I'm sorry?
That's for the resolution.
Yes, make the motion, we approve, approve and consider the resolution.
Motion for Leon, in second. Yeah, second to Greg to approve. All the favor say aye. Likewise, thanks. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion for Bruce, second to Leon to adjourn. All the favor say aye. Likewise, thanks. That motion does carry for sure. Thank you.